Good morning, everyone. Please. Good morning, everybody. This is Committee on Rules. We have obtained a quorum. Councilman Good, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman O'Brien, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilwoman Tasco. For the record, the following bills are being held at the request of the sponsor at the call of the Chair. Bill numbers 150... Can I have everybody's attention, please? It's hard to hear in here sometimes. Bill numbers 150-810, 150-811, 150-847, 850-848, and 850-862 are all being held at the call of the Chair. And effectively, for those of you who don't know, that means that bills would have to be reintroduced at the next session, since this is our last Rules Committee hearing of this session. Ms. Marconi, will you please read the title of the first bill before us today?
Bill number 150667 in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ninth Street, Washington Avenue, Darian Street, Alter Street, Eighth Street, Passianke Avenue, and Ellsworth Street. Marty Grigorsky.
Ms. Grigorsky, why don't you start, please?
Good morning, Councilman Greenly. Members of the Rules Committee.
Morning.
I'm Marty Grigorsky, Division Director with the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on bill number 150667, which was introduced into City Council on September 10th, 2015, by Councilmember Squillaw. Bill number 150667 amends the Philadelphia zoning maps for the area bounded by Ninth Street, Washington Avenue, Darian, Alter, Eighth Streets, Passianke Avenue, and Ellsworth Street. The impetus for this remapping was to allow development of a five-story mixed-use building at the southeast corner of the intersection of Ninth Street and Washington Avenue. The proposed development would include 70 apartments, 18,000 square feet of retail space, two below-grade levels of public and private parking, and a row of eight trinities along Darian Street. This remapping proposal closely matches the recommendations of the South District Plan adopted in 2015 to support the growth and maintenance of existing commercial corridors, as well as the zoning recommendation to strengthen the Washington Avenue urban commercial corridor. The Philadelphia City Planning Commission considered bill number 150667 at its meeting of October 20th, 2015, and recommended the bill for approval with the amendment that a sunset clause be introduced in order to tie the zoning change with the proposed development project. Philadelphia City Planning Commission staff recommended the sunset clause time period of 24 months, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Before we hear from anyone else, is there any questions for Mr. Grigorsky? Seeing none, please. Identify yourself for the record and proceed, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Rules Committee, my name is Peter Kelson. I'm here on behalf of Midwood Development today. With me is John Ustand and Shazia Shahid. Shazia, you want to come up, please? And we're here to present our proposal for the redevelopment of the former ICE and Coal Factory property located, as Mr. Grigorsky said, at the southeast corner of Ninth Street and Washington Avenue in the heart of South Philadelphia, the Italian market area. The site itself contains about 32,000 square feet of area. There's a small building out on the site at the corner of Ninth and Washington. Other than that, it's vacant, and that building, as part of the redevelopment process, would be demolished and we will rebuild. Midwood has owned the property for some time. So the proposed development, members of the Committee, is a game changer. It's a potential catalyst for the continued resurgence of the Italian market area, and let me tell you why. As Mr. Grigorsky indicated, we propose to develop a brand-new, five-story mixed-use structure approximately 60 to 70 feet in height. The project will include apartments, two levels of underground parking, public, as well as accessory to the building, approximately 18,000 square feet of retail commercial space, which members of the Committee will front along the frontage of Washington Avenue and Ninth Street, wrapping around the entire area and energizing that quadrant effectively. The overall project will contain approximately 125,000 square feet above grade. We estimate the project cost to be in excess of $50 million. As Mr. Grigorsky indicated, a very exciting component of the plan is the creation and construction of eight Trinity single-family homes to be constructed on Darian Street. As the Committee knows, Darian Street is a small residential-scale street. These owner-occupied houses will match the residential character of Darian and are designed to not only complement the scope and scale of the block, but to infill needed owner-occupied residential in this quadrant. Each of the Darian Street houses will have a private garden, as well as use of the parking spaces in the underground garage. The overall project itself, as you can see by the renderings and the materials I've given you, respects the scale and the character of the existing buildings and uses located in the immediate area of Washington Avenue and Ninth Street. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the plan for redevelopment of this area. I think it's important to note, members of the Committee, that development includes a significant amount of public parking, public parking. This supports the business community. As the Committee well knows, there is a scarcity of public parking serving the Italian market area, and this will fill a major void with regard to that issue. The plan not only serves our parking needs for our residents, but it will also serve the parking needs of the retailers and the community itself. Access to the garage is proposed to be located on Ninth Street. We're freeing up Washington Avenue, and all service loading and unloading will be limited to Ninth Street as well. The 18,000 square feet of retail, as I mentioned earlier, wraps around both Washington and Ninth Street. About 120 feet of frontage along Washington Avenue will be active retail space, and over 200 feet of frontage along Ninth Street will be active retail, engaging the sidewalks as well, keeping with the theme of the market. These retail spaces offer an opportunity to continue to revitalize and re-energize the market area. The site enjoys excellent access to public transit, Broad Street subway line, multiple SEPTA bus routes, serving all parts of the city. Members of the Committee, in order to proceed with this plan of development, we will need a rezoning from the current designation of CMX-2 to a designation of CMX-3 commercial in order to accommodate the massing of the proposed development. The reason we need additional height is being driven because we're creating two significant parking levels below grade, as well as the retail spaces which have high floor-to-ceiling heights. We've met on two occasions with the Passianke Square Civic Association and numerous area residents. We continue to review our plans for this property, and I think it's fair to say that the community's responses to our plan has been quite positive, overwhelmingly positive. We've made a commitment to the community that as the design and development process moves forward, we'll continue our outreach, we'll meet with them, and we will provide full and meaningful community engagement. Certain issues were raised regarding traffic and the impact of traffic, and we were requested, and we did, in fact, obtain a traffic study, which we will share with the community, as well as reviewing the proposal for traffic access on Ninth Street with the Streets Department. I would also indicate that the project will be thoroughly reviewed by Civic Design Review Committee, again, giving the community additional input. We have entered into an Economic Opportunity Plan with the City of Philadelphia's Office of Economic Opportunity. I provided you with a fully executed copy of that plan. It would ask that that be an amendment to the bill. A copy of the plan is before you, and I'll just summarize very quickly. MWD-SBE participation ranges have been set for this project and have been approved by the Office of Economic Opportunity. Minority-owned businesses for construction at 20% to 25%, female-owned businesses 10% to 15%, best-in-good faith efforts for disabled-owned businesses. We've set our local resident employment goal at 32%, and the minority apprentices, 50% of all hours worked by all apprentices; minority journeymen, 32% of all journey hours worked across all trades; female apprentices, 7% of all hours worked by all apprentices; and female journey persons, 2% of all hours worked across all trades. Subject to your approval and passage of the ordinance, we anticipate that construction of this project would commence in 2017 and be completed in approximately 18 to 20 months thereafter. Midwood Development is excited to expand its investment and development of residential and commercial properties in the city of Philadelphia. Now, we're moving a bit south from our center-city locations, and we requested Council approve bill number 150667, as introduced by Councilmember Squillaw, and as amended with the sunset provision and the EOP plan, and I, of course, would request suspension of rules. If the Committee has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, sir. First of all, before we get to that, we just want to recognize Majority Leader Councilman Jones is present. I know he has some bills coming up. They'll be coming up soon, sir. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none. Does anybody else want to say anything, or do you want to quit while you're ahead? Okay. All right.
Yes, thank you very much. We're very excited about this project.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, members of the Committee, and happy holidays.
Okay. You, too. Anyone else here to testify on bill number 150667? Seeing none. Ms. Marconi, our next bill, please.
Bill number 150844 in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Atlantic Street, Old York Road, Tioga Street, and 13th Street.
By the way, I should have said, just for the record, that EOP on Ninth and Washington will be offered at the meeting. Thank you. As an amendment. Mr. Grigorsky.
Good morning, Councilman Greenly. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Grigorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on bill number 150844, which was introduced into City Council on November 12th, 2015, by Councilmember Greenly for Council President Clark. Bill number 150844 amends Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by rezoning properties bounded by Atlantic Street, Old York Road, Tioga Street, and 13th Street, an East Tioga neighborhood located in the North District Planning District. This area has not begun the community remapping process to date, but this corrective rezoning seeks to more accurately reflect the current residential character of the East Tioga section of North Philadelphia. It seeks to change the existing multifamily residential and commercial mixed uses to single-family residential, and will include a smaller area for future commercial development. The Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider bill number 150844 at its meeting of December 8th, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Grigorsky? Seeing none. Thank you. Anyone else here to testify on bill number 150844? Seeing none. Ms. Marconi, our next bill, please.
Bill number 150857 in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Sedwick Street, Commissioner Street, 34th Street, and Indiana Street.
Mr. Grigorsky.
Good morning, Councilman Greenly. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Grigorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on bill number 150857, which was introduced into City Council on November 12th, 2015, by Councilmember Jones. Bill number 150857 amends the Philadelphia zoning maps by remapping an area bounded by Shedwick Street, Commissioner Street, 34th Street, and Indiana Street. The bill will amend the zoning maps to allow for mixed-use multifamily development. The area is in the North Planning District, which has not begun the district plan process and is not scheduled for a community remapping at this time. The zoning change was vetted and supported by the local community and registered community organization, the RAH Civic Association. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider bill number 150857 at its meeting of December 8th, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to briefly thank all of my at-large members, because this project is indicative of the city of Philadelphia coming back. We are taking an old industrial site that used to be a brownfield, renovating it to potentially have over 200 units, some market rate, some subsidized, but more importantly than just the upward tickety economy, we had cooperation with the neighborhood residents, and one of the commitments that the developer is interested in doing is renovating a recreation area, a recreation center, for that community which does not have one. So it's kind of the best of both worlds, and we, as district council people, get all of the credit, but I understand it takes nine votes to do anything in this body, and the three of you there have been steady votes for this uptick in our economy, and I want to thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. As you know, I happen to know some people up there, happen to have some relationship with the local ward leader, who is very enthusiastic about the plan. He told me. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this bill? Anyone else here to testify on bill number 150857? For the record, I have a letter from Richard DiMarco Esquire, who is speaking, obviously, in favor of the bill. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Moving right along. Ms. Marconi, our next bill, please.
Bill number 150859 in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Conshohocken Road, Country Club Road, Wentworth Road Extended, Langinell Avenue, and Cranston Road.
Thank you. Mr. Grigorsky.
Good morning, Councilman Greenly. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Grigorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on bill number 150859, which was introduced by Councilmember Jones on November 12th, 2015. Bill number 150859 amends the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Conshohocken Road, Country Club Road, Wentworth Road Extended, Langinell Avenue, and Cranston Road. These zoning changes are recommended in the West Park District Plan, zoning to advance the plan section, and will facilitate the development of Sharon Baptist senior residents and apply corrective zoning on adjacent recreational facility, which is the Woodside Park. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider bill number 150859 at its meeting of December 8th, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. And for the record, we also have an equal opportunity plan for this development, which will be offered at the meeting of the Rules Committee. Any questions for Mr. Grigorsky? Or any comments? Seeing none. Anyone else here to testify? Councilman, do you want to... Councilman Jones?
Yes. Again, this is a different part of my district in the 52nd Ward where at least two at-large members live, and this is the Sharon Baptist site, so prosperity on the economy doesn't just have one location, it has several in my district. And this is a smaller development, 51 units for senior citizens, and having the dubious task of trying to figure out what to do with my mother in the fourth quarter of life, I've visited a lot of centers. Well, the developers of these build beyond expectation. In fact, if things were different, I would ask for a corner property. They are so nice, and people in that quarter of their life deserve that kind of dignity and that kind of space. So I enthusiastically look forward to the development of this site.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. To the sponsor of this bill and to the City Planning Commission, how often is consideration given to capturing or designating X number of units for those with disabilities, physical disabilities?
The question was, was there any... or are there set-asides for people with disabilities in facilities like this? Did I say that right, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay.
When we do get developments coming in, it's one of the things that we do ask for. There's no set number that we have to have, but we do ask for, even with non-senior developments, for housing that is both visitable and accessible, but we don't have hard and fast standards for what the numbers would be. But it is something that comes up in most conversations with large developments.
So is it fair, then, to summarize that the department has no standard protocol for ensuring that with new construction, consideration is given to that community which is severely handicapped because of the limited housing for those who have physical disabilities?
There's no standard protocol, but it is something we're talking with developers about, you know, almost with every large development.
So what does that mean you're talking to the developers about?
We ask for them to provide either visitable or accessible units when it's possible, you know, and to put aside a certain number of them, but we don't have a standard of percentage of units.
On the flip side of that equation, when you consider Mayor-elect's commitment to early childhood education and the lack of childcare slots and spaces for little people, and other cities get it in that they are creating intergenerational experiences, living experiences, for seniors who have some interface with little people during the day, is that on the radar screen at all in the administration?
In a reactive way. When we see developments come in, we're not necessarily pushing them to do a daycare if that's not in their business plan. However, when they come in with a business plan that supports daycare, either with senior housing or large apartment developments, churches, schools, it's something that we support. Whether it goes to the zoning board, maybe there's a use issue, we'd support it there, or if it's a matter of right.
If it's a matter of what?
A matter of right permit, so they can get a permit.
A matter of right.
Yeah.
Okay. You have any comment about that, Councilman, with regards to seniors and those with learning disabilities? Not learning, forgive me, physical disabilities.
So on all of our developments that I've seen, and I've seen, this will be my third one proposed, one has already been built, there hasn't been a problem with accessibility.
Okay.
And they build, there's a thing, a term called "visitability,"
Yes.
Meaning that they have access to bathrooms, that the doors are wide enough
Mm-hmm.
For people who require wheelchairs to get through, all of them build beyond that expectation.
Okay.
So every now and then, at least one other member I know gets a back problem that I know of, and those steps become mountains, and those, you know, it gets a little hazardous. And they have been able to design, build accessibility into their product, and all you have to do is go by one of their community functions, and you'll see that everybody gets around fairly well, even to the roof.
Where's this location, again?
So one of the locations that the developer has is at 54th and Hazelhurst, and this second one that they're doing is going to be at Sharon Baptist's site
Oh, Sharon Baptist Church.
Right across the street.
Okay. All right, then. Thank you very much.
And Councilwoman, if I could add, this could be something, and maybe in next term, it could be looked into as something put in the code if it's deemed possible.
Great minds think alike. I've already sent a text to my staff on that very matter.
Okay. Great minds think alike. Mr. McClure, you have anything to add, or you're calling anybody?
Sure. We can...
In the microphone. Just identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt McClure of Ballard Spar on behalf of the developer, Penrose Development LLC, who's working in partnership with Sharon Baptist Church. With me is Harry Moody of Penrose, who's the project developer. Mr. Moody, you could answer your question directly, because this project is going through the OHCD process for low-income housing tax credits, so specifically, we can answer a question regarding visibility and accessibility.
Sir, just identify yourself.
Harry Moody, developer with Penrose Development. In regards to your question, the building actually has a requirement that at least 5% of the units are handicapped accessible. In our developments, we typically double that requirement, so we'll have at least 10% of the units accessible, and the building will be 100% visitable, which Councilman Jones just mentioned to you.
And that's a requirement stipulated by whom? That is a requirement stipulated by whom?
The Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency.
Okay. All right, then. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Anyone else here to testify on bill 150859? Seeing none, and once again, the equal opportunity plan will be offered as an amendment at the meeting of the Committee. Ms. Marconi, our next bill, please.
Bill number 150861 in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Abbotsford Avenue, Whistahicken Avenue, Huntington Park Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, Ridge Avenue, and Scotts Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Grigorsky.
Good morning, Councilman Greenly. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Grigorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on bill number 150861, which was introduced into City Council on November 12th, 2015, by Councilmember Jones. Bill number 150861 amends the Philadelphia zoning maps by remapping an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Abbotsford Avenue, Whistahicken Avenue, Hunting Park Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, Ridge Avenue, and Scotts Lane. The proposal remaps some I-2 industrial and CMX-3 commercial districts to ICMX and IRMX industrial mixed use. The I-2 industrial districts reflect a manufacturing legacy that is obsolete within this area. ICMX districts allow for uses that are more reflective of 21st-century industries and businesses. IRMX districts along Scott Lane are appropriate for historic mill buildings that can be reused for residential purposes. The remapping proposal reflects the recommendations of the Hunting Park West Industrial Area Plan adopted in 2010 to strengthen this area as an employment center for north and northwest Philadelphia. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider bill number 150861 at its meeting of December 8th, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Grigorsky on this? Anybody else have a... Councilman Jones, you're busy today.
Yes. We are, again, thankful to the at-large folk. You don't get enough credit as to big projects like Hunting Park and other places that are beginning to take off. In '07, when we were in these chambers, we were putting out fires and talking about, you know, our bond rating going down. This is indicative of the economy turning around. And again, thank you for all of the public policy stuff that you put in place to make these kinds of developments happen.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do in your district. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none. Anyone else here to testify on bill number 150861? Seeing none. Thank you. Ms. Marconi, please.
Bill number 150863 in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by South Street, Sixth Street, Washington Avenue, and 11th Street.
Mr. Grigorsky.
Good morning, Councilman Greenly. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Grigorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on bill number 150... of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on Bill number 150863, which was introduced in the City Council on November 12, 2015, by Councilmember Squillaw. Bill number 150863 amends the Philadelphia zoning maps by remapping an area bounded by South Street, Sixth Street, Washington Avenue, and 11th Street. The remapping proposal reflects the recommendations of the Central District Plan adopted in 2013 and the South District Plan of 2015. This remapping supports the commercial corridors of South Street, 9th Street, Christian Street, and Washington Avenue, and correctly zones both residential and commercial properties in the area, as well as the Plumboe Park. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider Bill number 150863 at its meeting of December 8, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. I have on my notes here that this has an amendment. Are you, you're familiar with that?
This does. There were technical amendments asked for by the Law Department.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gregorsky on this bill? Anyone else to testify on Bill number 150863? Seeing none, thank you. Ms. Marconi, our next bill, please.
Bill number 150843, in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within area bounded by Chestnut Street, 37th Street, Sampson Street, and 38th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Gregorsky, please.
Good morning, Councilman Greenley. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Gregorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on Bill number 150843, which was introduced in the City Council on November 12, 2015, by Councilmember Blackwell. Bill number 150843 amends the Philadelphia zoning maps for the area bounded by Chestnut Street, 37th Street, Sampson Street, and 38th Street. The impetus for this remapping is to allow the Archdiocese of Philadelphia to develop land adjacent to the St. Agatha-St. James Church. The proposed development includes residential and retail development adjacent to and over the existing Newman Center. This remapping proposal matches a recommendation of the University Southwest District Plan adopted in 2013 to promote multifamily uses along commercial corridors and to create density around transit nodes. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider Bill number 150843 at its meeting of December 8, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. First, are there any questions for Mr. Gregorsky on this bill? Seeing none, sir, you look like you're ready to testify. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes. Good morning, Councilman Greenley. Members of the committee, my name is Thomas Croke. I'm the Director of Real Estate for the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. The Archdiocese owns the property at 3714 through 3728 Chestnut Street, and we are interested in rezoning the property from RM4 to CMX4 to conform to the development in the area and align with the city planning district plan. In addition, the change will allow the Archdiocese to continue to support its community mission in that area. The Archdiocese is also committed to the redevelopment of the property in a manner that is sensitive to both St. Agatha-St. James, as well as the Episcopal Cathedral across the street. The Archdiocese is committed to including 40% participation in a comprehensive and meaningful economic opportunity plan that sets the goal for use of minority business and professional services and construction, as well as the use of local and minority labor during construction. We respectfully request that this bill be voted favorably out of committee and be listed for a first reading of council on December 3. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Just for the record, I'm familiar with this area from many years ago. I went to actually grade school at 39th and Chestnut many years ago, and St. James was an active parish at that time, and it, it's great to see it still thriving out there, combined with St. Agatha's. So good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Croke? Seeing none, anyone else here to testify on Bill number 15086, eight, I'm sorry, 150843? Seeing none, Ms. Marconi, please.
Bill number 150864, in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located with an area bounded by Allegheny Avenue, 17th Street, West Moreland Street, and 19th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Gregorsky.
Good morning, Councilman Greenley. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Gregorsky, Division Director with the Development Division with the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on Bill number 150864, which was introduced in the City Council on November 12, 2015, by Councilmember Bass. Bill number 150864 will amend the zoning maps to allow the Cristo Rey Philadelphia High School, currently located in the temporary building, to develop a permanent high school in the Tioga neighborhood. This area is in the North Planning District, which has not begun the district plan process and is not scheduled for a community remapping at this time. This zoning change was vetted and supported by the local community and registered community organization, Tioga United. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider Bill number 150864 at its meeting of December 8, 2015, and a staff recommendation will be for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Gregorsky? Seeing none, Mr. O'Connell, right? Okay. Please.
Thank you. Mr. John O'Connell, I'm the founder and the president of Cristo Rey. Some of you I know are familiar with the school. We're four years old. We're a unique model of school for Philadelphia, but we're not unique in the United States. We're one of 30 Cristo Rey High Schools in the United States. Cristo Rey schools are designed and operated exclusively to serve the lowest-income kids in the city who want a top-quality college prep education. We have 446 students in our location on North Broad Street on Duncan. We're bursting at the seams, and we hope to develop a beautiful new high school at this site, 1729, and have somewhere between 500 and 600 students there. And in order to do that, we need the zoning change, and if we get the zoning change, we will go ahead and purchase the property this month and begin fundraising.
Always, always fun, right?
Yes.
Sir, I am familiar with your school. I hear from a lot of people in the area. You do a great job. It's well-known, and good luck. We're glad to see you expanding and staying in Philadelphia. Any questions? Seeing none, anyone else here testify on Bill number 150864? Seeing none, thank you. Let's move on to our next bill. Ms. Marconi, please.
Bill number 150649, in ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by adding a new subsection entitled "Written House Square Residential Area" and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
Yeah, Mr. Gregorsky, before you start, I know there is an amendment. Are you aware of the amendment that was put in?
We are. We got it.
Okay, and I know this bill has been heard before, but you can, if you, if you want to make any comment on the amendment to one way or the other, I appreciate it.
We include it in our testimony.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilman Greenley. Members of the Rules Committee, Marty Gregorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, I'm here to testify on Bill number 150649, which was introduced in the City Council on September 10, 2015, by Councilmember Greenley for Council President Clark. Bill number 150649 amends the Philadelphia zoning code by amending Title 14 of the code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by adding a new subsection entitled "Written House Square Residential Area," which includes all properties on both sides of Written House Square between 20th Street and 21st Street. The bill will apply to all residentially-zoned properties and properties permitted exclusively for residential uses located within the above area by not permitting the following uses: group living except personal care homes, housing not owner-occupied, advertised only and rented only to students as defined as Section 14203 (parent 325) student. The bill then defines students as, as used in Section 14-506 in the North Central Philadelphia overlay district and in Section 14-502 (parent 5, parent C), prohibited uses in the Written House Square residential area, and the term "student shall have the meaning as defined under Chapter 10-1800, vicarious liability for student conduct of the Philadelphia Code." The Planning Commission considered this, considered that the Center City residents, which is the designated RCO for the area, is not in support of the bill, and that the predominant residential district in this area is RM1, where the group living use already requires a special, a special exception granted by the zoning board of adjustments. Given that this use is already being heard in a public hearing, the bill appears to limit a specific class of people, students, from residing in a district, and we have previously recommended against similar bills limiting student housing. Philadelphia City Planning Commission considered Bill number 150649 at its meeting of October 20, 2015, and recommended not to approve, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregorsky. Just a couple of things real quick. First of all, you know, the amendment that I think is going to be introduced is shrinking this area considerably.
Correct.
Is he, the Planning Commission's position just that they are opposed to any kind of limits of this sort, no matter kind of what?
That was what I heard at the meeting when, when they recommended not to approve this. So I don't know that it would make a difference. Sorry.
And the other, if I understand that the, even the wording is a little bit more limited than this, as they talk about, unlike some other areas, I think, in the city, they talk about just advertised only and rented too. So it's not telling you can't rent it, it's just that they can't advert, can't promote it as a student housing. Is that, and that's a little different from, I think, some of the other section, other areas of the city. Am I correct?
I believe it is.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So this, is it fair to say this is a rather limited limitation, if you will?
This is very limited, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gregorsky? I know we have some people who want to speak on this one. I have Ann Gitter, Gitter, I'm sorry. Would you like to come up? Ma'am, I know you were here last time, so we know kind of the issue here, so, you know, and I know you're, I understand about the immediate residents are supportive of this bill, so maybe you could just, and particularly speak if, if you have any particular comment on the amendment to this bill.
Oh, good morning, Councilman Greenley.
Good morning.
I have lived at, on the-
Just identify yourself.
Oh, Ann Gitter, and I live on the block that we're discussing, and I have lived there for almost 20 years on a very quiet block. The two buildings that are being built, well, we have 23 single, single-family homes on our block. Approximately 50 people currently live on our block. These two buildings that they're repurposing for student housing will have close to 50 bedrooms in them, which will take the block from 50 people to a minimum of 100, and probably on weekends, close to 150 people. So it will increase the number of people living on our block overnight to triple on the weekends, and both buildings, I believe, are going to have roof decks, huge roof decks, not little roof decks, but huge roof decks. So we feel it is a quality-of-life issue for our block with trash, noise, deliveries, short-term leases, people moving in and out all the time, street closings, and we have a petition from 108 people that everyone on our block signed it, and most of the people on the adjacent blocks who are not in favor of these two projects that are being built for students. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And as I understand, the amendment, as I said to Mr. Gregorsky, sincerely-
Was shrunk.
-shrunk the-
Totally, yes.
Okay.
Just to our block.
Okay. I got you.
Thank you.
You want to add something, or? Yeah, please, just identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Gordon Grant. I also live on the 2000 block of Written House Square. I just wanted to reiterate to Councilman Greenley and the other council persons present about a few specific issues related to Council President Clark's bill. Of course, we want to emphasize again the overwhelming community support for the bill, and I think that we need to emphasize that this is, as Ann Gitter said, a quality-of-life issue. It is not intended to discriminate against any particular class, and it is dealing with the exigent circumstances of an imminent development completion, which will, if unhindered, triple the density of the, the block. And so what we're really looking at here is a scenario where we, the residents of the block, have continuously worked with all members of the community around us, CCRA, some of the realtors, and other people who have voiced concerns about the bill's fitness for them, and it has been, as you said, trimmed down to a measure and manner that really seems to, to look after the interest of the residents of the block. If there is any remaining opposition, I would like it noted for the record that it is of our opinion that the Center City Residents Association seems to be promoting the interest of realtors and entities renting only and not being concerned about the residents of the block, and we think that that is the most important thing to do here, and we should not overlook quality-of-life concerns for special interest groups of a commercial nature. And we thank you for your support for this bill, and we hope that, you know, if it is enacted in a sufficiently timely manner, it will have a positive effect on use occupancy and completion of these development projects, Councilman. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you something real quick. As I'm looking at these buildings, I'm kind of familiar with that area. Those buildings are a little unusual in their size.
Yes, they are.
For the immediate area, right? I mean, for the most part, you have like three and four-story kind of rowhouse-type thing.
That's right. Yeah, in fact, I would say even less. We, we have two-to-three-story buildings on this block, and whereas you are looking at three- and four-story buildings here, and it's the footprint and also the total square footage. The, the smaller garage in its finished form will have about 50, 200 square feet, and the larger garage in its finished form will have between 13,000 and 14,000 square feet. And so you're, you're looking at density, or let's just talk about square footage of dwelling area per occupant, if unhindered, it will be a meager 350 square feet of dwelling area per occupant. This is approximately 50% less than even dormitory dwelling area per occupant for Drexel, Temple, and University of Pennsylvania.
So you think they might spend a little time on that deck they're talking about?
Yeah, I, I think so. And I think that, you know, in, in a, in a realistic sense, we can expect that there will be quality-of-life issues for, for people living on the block, with students out on roof decks, with trash, with parking, and so on, and so taking that into account, the group living provisions within this, this bill, I think, will do a lot to assist the quality-of-life issues that we foresee.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else here that would like to speak? Sir, please. You know how this works. Just identify yourself and proceed.
Hi, Charles Goodwin, President Center City Residents Association. I am testifying as to the revised bill, which we understand limits the applicability of the bill to this single block of Written House Square Street. We just received the text of the revised bill last night, or last, yesterday afternoon, pardon me. Our executive committee has considered this, and we are split right down the middle and therefore express no opinion. Half of our executive committee is very sympathetic to the residents of this block who are faced with what seems to be an incredibly inappropriate development for what is a block of small, fully-occupied, single-family homes, for the most part, and is now being, as Ms. Gitter testified, threatened with the buildings, or with buildings that will double or triple, if not quadruple perhaps, the residential population of what is a small street. On the other hand, the other half of our executive committee is still deeply troubled by singling out students as a class just because we are judging people based solely on their demographics rather than on their individual conduct, and we, they, we, they are uncomfortable with that. So having, we have a clash of the goods. Both sides are right, and we have been unable, in the short time allotted, to reach consensus amongst ourselves as to how we should come down. We hope that the council will be considering some density regulation, perhaps more generally for Written House Square, or the Written House Square area, Center City area, perhaps later, and the only thought I, I should note, this is significantly different from the prior legislation which we opposed, which is why we did reconsider it. And my final point, I would actually, or we should actually express some real gratitude to Councilman Clark, his staff, his office, this committee, and the council. This is really the kind of micro focusing on important details of quality of life for people who live in Philadelphia, and it is very reassuring to see that our legislative body takes that attention to, and takes so seriously the quality of life of the citizens of this city.
Okay. We like compliments. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Appreciate that. And I, and I understand what you're, you know, the dilemma, as you say. I, I just say, and, and look, I was a student a long time ago, and I was young a long time ago, and I know what students do. I have a, just a single-family house on my block, and depending on who's in there at that particular semester, it can be a little tough, you know? They don't mean it. They probably are going to graduate to be great people, but, you know, when you're 20, 21 years old and you have a few, too many Coca-Colas and that caffeine gets to you, it can be a little problematic. And I think when you look at those buildings, and as I pointed out, I think they are significantly different, and I think you said that, of a lot of the, that immediate area, it just seems that this, just saying that you can't directly promote this as student housing seems like a fairly reasonable compromise. Again, it's not kicking people out. It's not if you're a student, they're going to throw you, you know, throw you out of the neighborhood, but it's just the way that a building is promoted, and it, it seems building is promoted, and it seems to me a very reasonable compromise, and as you said, this was worked on for a long time. Give Mr. Young and other people in Council President Clark's office a lot of credit, because I know you folks aren't always easy to deal with all the time. Can I say that?
Well, yeah, I might have my opinion, but I am here as the representative of an organization-
No, I got you, I got you. I'm just throwing that out for the record.
We really, we have two very valid points on either side.
No, I got you, I got you.
And I really have a lot of, as a homeowner in this footprint and someone who lives with students, I have sincere concern, and I certainly wouldn't want somebody to be packing people in like sardines in the building next to me. I mean, I'd take great exception to that.
And again, when there's students, oftentimes, they have friends over, girlfriends, boyfriends, whatever, it adds to the, and I would think in that area, if you're in Rittenhouse Square, it's a nice area to go party a little bit, you know, if you have a nice big building like that.
I'll reserve comment on that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Anyone else here testify on Bill Number 150649? Seeing none, just for the record, we have a written testimony from Christine Young-Gertz of the Pennsylvania Apartment Association, who remains opposed to this bill. That being the end of that one. Ms. Marconi, our next bill, please.
Bill Number 150814, in order to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by adding requirements related to the provision of electric vehicle supply wiring in connection with certain accessory parking, all under certain terms and conditions.
Okay, before we hear from Mr. Gregorsky, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown sponsored this bill, please.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, gentlemen. On October 2015, my office and I were proud to introduce Bill Number 150814. This bill will require that new developments, I repeat, new developments, with a residential use that are providing 20 or more parking spaces, also provide electric vehicle infrastructure to a small percentage of those parking spaces. This is a simple, low-cost approach to encourage electric vehicle adoption and use. Electric vehicles are not the wave of the future, they are increasingly becoming a popular choice for today's consumers. Thus, it behooves our city to get in front of the trend, given that Philadelphia parking lots currently are not equipped to change, to charge, electric vehicles. This ordinance is not a retrofit bill, I repeat, this ordinance is not a retrofit bill. No existing buildings or those currently under development are affected. No existing buildings or those currently under development are affected. Neither does this ordinance require that the actual charging station be installed. This ordinance also exempts all mechanical and valet parking from its requirements. This ordinance only requires that during the construction phase of a development, that electrical wiring be provided to a small percentage of provided parking spaces. My homework tells me that in October 2015, The New York Times ran an article titled, "In California, Electric Cars Outpace Plugs and Sparks Fly." For Philadelphia to avoid the same fate, it is imperative that we begin to build our electric vehicle infrastructure now in a low-cost and efficient way. I'm pleased to say that this legislation is another step in the direction to reduce our carbon footprint, and therefore is supported by the Delaware Valley Building Council, which is in the business of adopting sustainable business practices and actually encourages the use of alternative-fuel vehicles as well. If the legislation passes, Philadelphia will join a growing list of cities, always West Coast is ahead of us, in this case Palo Alto, California, and Los Angeles in Oregon, but we have a couple of cities on the East Coast already doing this, Boston and New York City. We want Philadelphia to be ahead of the curve among cities with electric vehicle infrastructure. And for these reasons and more, I'm asking for serious consideration and support of this legislation this morning. I want to thank both my staff, the administration whom we work very closely with, the Planning Commission, the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, a number of developers, and we'll be hearing from the Building Industry Association, and for all of those who've worked to come up with a better bill around this new sustainability practice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. As I understand, you may have mentioned this, I'm sorry, amendment being put in that more, like even clearly defines the regulations.
That is correct. We made a number of changes to try to capture legitimate concerns raised by all the stakeholders to make this a better bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregorsky, let's start with you.
Morning, Councilwoman Greenly, members of the Rules Committee. I'm Marty Gregorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission, here to testify on Bill Number 150814, which was introduced in the City Council on October 29, 2015, by Councilmember Reynolds Brown. Bill Number 150814 amends the Philadelphia zoning code by amending Section 14-803 Motor Vehicle Parking Standards by adding a requirement that developers provide pre-wiring for electrical vehicles when providing parking for a development with a residential component. The amended bill creates a chart that correlates the number of pre-wired branch circuits to the number of parking spaces. The branch circuits shall provide the ability to host a 208 to 240-volt, 40-ampere grounded AC, abutting the designated parking spaces. The Philadelphia City Planning Commission considered Bill Number 150814 at its meeting of November 17, 2015, and recommended to support the bill in concept, and with the current amendments, the staff believes that the objections to the text have been removed. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregorsky. Before I move on, please like to record reflect that Councilman Squill, a member of the committee, is present. Any questions first, or Mr. Gregorsky? Seeing none. Sir, please, identify yourself and proceed.
Great. Good morning, Chairman Greenly and members of the Rules Committee. I'm Andrew Sharp. I'm the Deputy Director at the Office of Sustainability. I'm here to testify on behalf of the administration in support of Bill Number 150814, which requires that new residential developments with a common parking area of 20 or more spaces pre-wire a small number of those spaces for electric vehicle charging sites in the future. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for her continued partnership on sustainability and alternative-fuel vehicles in general. The Mayor's Office of Sustainability is responsible for the implementation of Greenworks, the city's comprehensive sustainability plan. As part of Greenworks, the city set a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 20% from 1990 baselines. It's a key sustainability indicator that we track. Despite utility incentive programs and increased public awareness, Philadelphia has not reached our carbon reduction goals. To meet local climate goals, much more aggressive action will be necessary in the future. It's clear that in order to see meaningful reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, we must address our transportation sector and our vehicle fleet, which account for 19% of the city's emissions. An important strategy to reducing those emissions now and over the coming years is increasing the adoption of electric vehicles and moving away from traditional gasoline-powered engines. Electric vehicles improve air quality, decrease harmful asthma-causing pollution, and rely on secure domestically-produced energy. We know that our vehicle fleet will become increasingly electrified over the coming decades, and it is essential that Philadelphia have the electric vehicle charging infrastructure in place to support that growth. While current demand for EVs is increasing, the aim of this bill is to prepare for the coming generation of EVs by building out necessary charging infrastructure. This legislation is a small and sensible step to improve the city's EV readiness and begin to plan to meet the future needs in a strategic, cost-effective way. Pre-wiring at the time of construction is the least expensive option and would be a long-term cost saver for building owners and tenants. This bill aligns EV infrastructure growth with residential projects where parking spaces are already included, meaning that no spaces in the public right-of-way will be impacted. This legislation does not require the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, simply the wiring that could support a charger.
Excuse me, Mr. Sharp, can you repeat that?
Sure.
Just to clear the noise and the misunderstandings that continue to percolate.
This legislation does not require the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, simply the wiring that could support a charger in the future. This is a forward-thinking step that we can take now that will help to streamline and simplify our transition to an increasingly electrified vehicle fleet in the years to come. In new residential development, the cost of wiring a parking space during initial construction ranges from between about $100 to $500, according to local estimates. In contrast, that same wiring installed after a building or a parking lot is complete could cost up to 10 times more, as it would necessitate opening up walls and digging up parking lots. With wiring in place, it will be much easier in the future for residents to replace their conventional vehicles with electric vehicles. Several municipalities around the country, including Los Angeles, already have EV pre-wiring laws in place. In Philadelphia, there are an increasing number of electric vehicles on our road, and we know that number will continue to grow probably exponentially over the next years and decades. We acknowledge the need for thoughtful planning as Philadelphia builds out its EV infrastructure, not simply one-off policies or programs. To this end, in 2016, our office will be developing a comprehensive EV plan, and we look forward to working with City Council, PICO, SEPTA, the building industry, and other partners on this effort. The Mayor's Office of Sustainability supports this legislation because it is a smart, low-cost way to encourage EV adoption and prepare for coming EV use. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any quick comments, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
I'm pleased to hear that you're going to take a very comprehensive, wide umbrella look in working with partners like SEPTA and others that would have an interest in the future, which is now. Speak to us a little bit about, and fill in some of the blanks, about the number of considerations your office captured that was shared by those who have some trepidation around this legislation.
Sure, so we worked with your office and other stakeholders in the building community, really to hear, you know, their legitimate concerns. We increased the floor, the threshold from this bill by 100% from a threshold of 10 to 20. So this project only applies now to projects with 20 or more parking spaces in a common area, which essentially are on the larger end of some of these residential projects. We've also exempted valet and mechanical garages from this law, and we've also altered some of the percentages in the table that you'll see included in the bill. They initially started at around 10%, now mostly around 5%. So we heard legitimate concerns, and this bill has changed significantly since it was originally proposed, and we're happy with where we are, and we're thankful for the thoughtful input from stakeholders, including in the building community.
Very good. Thank you very, very much. Very much for your testimony, and you just presented us another opportunity, hearing that you all, the Department of, I mean, the Mayor's Office of Sustainability is now going to take a real comprehensive look, see, at this new world order of electric vehicles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions for these witnesses? Thank you. Are there other witnesses for this bill? Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Brian Emmons, and I am the incoming president of the Building Industry Association of Philadelphia. The BIA represents the Philadelphia's region's residential home builders, residential contractors and suppliers. We would like to thank Chairman Greenly and the committees, the members of the committee on rules, for the opportunity to speak before you today. I am here today to testify regarding Bill Number 150814, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, to require a certain amount of parking for electric vehicles in new private developments. We appreciate the Councilwoman's interest in the issue, and we have worked very well with her on many issues regarding sustainable development in the past, and we look forward to continuing to do so in the future. The BIA represents, I'm sorry, the BIA supports this legislation's premise, and in fact, several of our members have been encouraging and facilitating electric car usage in our developments for some time now. We have seen firsthand that less and less of our homebuyers and renters are traditional car owners, and certainly encouraging electric car use makes sense for both developers and the city as a whole. It is important to note, however, that we have not seen the demand for electric car parking despite our willingness to provide it. We surveyed our members, and in even the largest developments, there was never more than a couple residents that wanted to be able to charge an electric vehicle, even when we offered it to them. We understand the need for the city to plan for the future and encourage infrastructure that sees as beneficial, but we are not necessarily convinced that the future would involve the infrastructure used by today's electric cars. Certainly, our greatest concern about this legislation is that it does not appropriately relate the realities of building condominiums in contrast with apartments. If I build a condo project with a certain number of units and its required number of parking spaces, each of those specific spaces is actually deeded to a specific unit owner. The intent of the bill is clearly to encourage that all residents of adult development should have a potential for, opportunity for electric car parking, but not in a condo development. I would instead have to sell some of these units with parking, with electric car wiring, regardless if they, regardless of their desire to have it. This would also mean that required wiring would have to further be connected to a specific unit, which greatly increases the cost of this mandate. Again, we don't have any problem regarding apartments, it's condominiums with specific deeded parking spaces that we're concerned about. There's a big difference between building parking for condo buyers instead of renters. This could be addressed by an amendment that would exempt condo developments from these provisions, but instead require that every single condo developer offer an electrical car infrastructure as a purchasable option. Please don't force me to install an electric outlet for someone's private parking spot unless they ask for it. Regardless of the type of development, requiring developers to install this wiring throughout, without the demand for it, creates financial hardships for the developer, which also makes Philadelphia housing less affordable. The BIA believes that the city and council should instead continue to focus on streamlining and improving the process of residential construction in the city, not adding unnecessary and time-consuming steps which do not offer a tangible benefit that encourages development. Instead, we ask you to encourage electrical vehicle parking by creating an incentive for us to do so. Currently, the code gives a reduced parking requirement to developers who set aside parking for car sharing. A similar incentive would reach the same goals of this legislation without adding costs and making housing in Philadelphia more expensive. From the beginning, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and her staff have expressed willingness to work with us on this legislation, and we have graciously offered several amendments. While this is greatly appreciated, the bill as currently proposed is still problematic, and so the BIA asks that these concerns be considered for possible amendment. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations on your new leadership.
Thank you.
So, I have a number of comments and questions here, and I would like the Mayor's Office of Sustainability to please come back to the table to help us get through this. You do raise an important consideration with regards to the distinction between condominiums and apartments, and so I need, I would like the Mayor's Office, if you would, to comment, if you would, because it seems like we're splitting hairs, and so just help me find out where there might be some middle ground with that, because the reality is that there's some developers that are already doing this. I mean, this is not my bright idea. I've gone into a few apartment buildings versus condos-
Yep.
...where the developer is ahead of the city and putting in wiring and actual infrastructure for electric vehicles. So could you comment for me?
Sure, I would add, you know, the recommendation to offer an EV charging spot, or EV wiring upon any purchase, I think is a good suggestion, and we would certainly be amenable to that. I think that is, that is something that we would certainly be supportive of. We don't necessarily see a distinction between apartments and condos. We believe that, given the need to scale this infrastructure at the level that we need to do, given the progress that we're going to need to make over the next five, 10, 15 years, we really need to start, you know, building that infrastructure now. And again, this does not, this does not require builders to install, you know, expensive charging stations, this is just the wiring-
The wiring.
-the wiring to support that bill, which, according to local estimates, we've talked to Local 98, would be about $100 to $500 per spot, and we're talking, you know, maybe a handful of spots in a very large project. So, you know, I think we have common ground, you know, on potentially offering this as an opportunity for each condo owner. But, big picture, this is not just about current demand and what buyers today want. Given that these projects are going to be around, you know, for the next 40, 50, 100 years, you know, we can't just be thinking about the here and now and market conditions currently, we need to be thinking and planning about what our energy future is going to look like in 10, 15, 20 years. And frankly, if we build it now, it's much cheaper to install this EV wiring as opposed to in 15 or 20 years, when somebody wants an EV charger in their space, it could cost, you know, $10,000, $15,000 at that point to rip up, rip up walls and dig under pavement. So we think this is a smart, low-cost way to start to build and scale that infrastructure that we're going to need over the coming years.
Would you like to comment- Would you like to comment, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I wish that...
Is this the first time the two of you are meeting?
Yes.
That's not good. Okay.
I can tell you this. I believe the estimates for the wiring is completely understated. My personal experience has been, the company that I work for besides the BIA, we've actually offered this as a purchasable option and we have since 2005. We fully believe there's a need for it. We believe that we need to plan for the future and one of the things that we do is we've given people the ability to purchase that. And we've built nearly 1,000 homes and we've only had two people actually purchase this option. Do we think that people will actually want to do it in the future? Yeah, absolutely. But, in a condominium, this creates a couple of issues. Number one, when you do it right now, like the estimate of $500, four months ago, we actually installed one of these and you've got to remember now, we're talking about condominiums. So, this building is a ground floor parking and it's got four floors of condominiums above it. Thankfully for us, the person that bought this option lived directly above on the second floor in a location that's near, very near, to the parking space that they're assigned to. Because you've got to remember, this parking space is designed. And in order to eliminate the condominium association from actually paying for the electricity for this person, we have to go to their home, we have to run electrical line and conduit and wiring from their unit down to their parking space. The expensive part is, number one, you actually have to, in condominiums, it's actually got to be in metal conduit. So, they've got to run the metal conduit, then they've got to run the wiring. The actual outlet is actually very, very small. So, we agree with that. But, my cost on that option alone, using Local 98, was over $2,000. And that was the most simple of ways. If this person would have been on the fourth floor or the fifth floor on the other side of the building from the parking space, we're literally talking, it could take two men, two to three days just in order to run the piping alone from point A to point B.
In instance, the wiring is being run to the condo versus not running to the, not having the wiring run to the condo?
That, in that instance, that's running the conduit and the wiring, just the conduit and the wiring, from the condominium owner's electrical service panel to their parking space.
And so?
That way, that way, they can pay for their parking, their electricity.
So, help me understand, when the city is about to, now a particular measure has become law and it impacts a particular industry, in this case, BIA, what type of internal protocols do you, does the organization go through to A, inform your membership that B is a new day and C, you have to comply?
What kind of things do we go through?
Yes.
Well, we, first of all, we talk about it at our board member, board meetings and then we distribute emails and packages to all of our membership, if not on a weekly, on a bi-weekly basis.
Because we went through a similar conversation, discussion and friendly debate, quite frankly, around a couple of other measures out of my office and ultimately, the industry caught up and it's better for everybody.
Agreed.
So, factoring in that this really is not about today at all. I mean, on national news, President Obama is talking about climate change and it's really more about how not getting, not getting our program together is going to affect the economies around the world. So...
Let me take you through a real-life example, real quick.
Please.
The majority of time, when you're talking about a condominium, the condominium design is actually completed well before we open up for sale. So, we hire an architect, we hired mechanical and electrical engineers to design the building. At that point, we go in for permitting. If this was a requirement, we need to, before we even open up for sale, we need to select how many of our parking spaces in that development are required to actually have these spaces and we need to have the engineer of record actually show these documents on the record, not knowing who wants them.
So, let me ask you to pause right there. I believe this does not go into effect until July 2016.
Right.
If I'm, I hate to rely on my memory, but...
Yeah, no, you're correct.
Councilwoman, let me jump in here.
Please.
I was going to add that. This does, it's another six months before this will take effect. So, I think it certainly, to the Councilwoman's point, gives you time to get the word out and adjust. And also, women, hold on. And also, if, if, and I just throw this out, Councilwoman, because I know you're very open to always have discussion.
Please.
If this bill passes now, there is time, next year, if there needs to be some adjustments, another bill could be, could be put in to make those adjustments. Now, that may not be necessary or may not be desired.
We're certainly open to that.
By the sponsor. But, I think, I, again, speaking for myself, because I think this is a good concept, we, if we're going to pass it in this term, we've got to move it today.
And we still have an opportunity to amend prior to next, no, we don't.
No.
Next Thursday.
No.
We do not.
Well, that's what...
Well, you could, excuse me, you could amend it tomorrow, first thing, you wouldn't have a lot of time to do that, you know, so...
I'd also like to add, Philadelphia is not the first municipality to deal with this issue. We've spoken with folks in LA and Palo Alto who've dealt with both apartments, condos. You know, concerns about exorbitant costs were expressed at the outset. What they've found in reality is that they have not, you know, bared fruit in terms of, in terms of, you know, these $5,000 and $10,000 and $15,000 costs. What we've heard from our folks in LA who have similar labor conditions, anywhere from $100 to $400, you know, on a huge project, it's not, you know, nothing, but it's certainly a nominal amount of money. And I think it's smart planning, given that it's also an asset for a condo owner. A condo owner now, you know, has this as something that they can either sell or use themselves and makes their condo more valuable in the future. So, other cities have gotten around this, condos have certainly been built and I would add, there are also other models here. Some electric vehicle charging stations, instead of having to run the wiring up through to the apartment.
The apartment.
It's more of like a coin-operated laundromat system, as you would imagine, where you could pay as you go with your credit card at the charging port itself. So, that would not necessitate running the wire four stories up into the condo owner's electrical panel.
So, thank you for articulating that in a way that I was struggling with right here, looking at my notes. Are you aware of that, of that model?
Yes, I am.
Brian?
I am. The problem becomes, when you have, when you have a condo development that's got 70 units and 120 parking spaces...
We're talking about going forward. We're not talking about anything right now on the books between now and July 2016.
No, I completely understand that.
Okay.
And I don't want my previous message to get confused. We have, if we, if this got adopted today, we could get an email out. So, we're not concerned about notifying our members. What we're concerned about is the time after we submit the plans, we actually have to sell those spaces. So, we would have to predetermine which spaces actually are going to get that in order for the project documents to be approved by licensing and inspections. So, then, those spaces are predeterminedly assigned to the units. So, we have to decide, okay, Unit 101 is going to get electric parking, Unit 102, Unit 103, Unit 104. Now, if nobody else picks a parking space, then those people get it, we understand that. But, what happens is if, you know, Unit 405, 406, 407, we have other people that come and actually choose to purchase this, which we hope is the case, then we deal with a situation where we've been going to remove the required spaces from other spaces and it creates complexities that we haven't thought through. And we're not saying that...
Who's we? Who's we?
The BIA.
Okay.
The BIA. I mean, we're not saying that there's not a solution to all these problems because there's apparently a lot of technology that we're not aware of because we haven't seen the demand as other markets. LA is a very green space city compared to what we're seeing. A lot, a lot of the, the technology apparently is out there. We just don't know about it because we haven't had to know about it.
And so, with that, with that reality, does it not behoove us as a city to get with the new programs of the future and adapt and change our paradigm so that we can be in step and not be behind the eight ball, which is currently what's happening in LA? The problem caught up to them and they weren't quite ready because they simply did not have enough charging stations to capture the consumer market.
Well, that's why, that's why we're totally for this on apartments. Apartments are completely different. We believe so. And we believe that every developer should do the responsible thing and offer this as an option for their buyers to purchase it. That way, every single person that wants it can have it, but we're not forcing developers to provide a space for somebody that doesn't want it.
And I would just say, our concern is, you know, we can't just simply rely on current market demand for this.
Agreed.
This is something we need to plan for, for the future. We know that our vehicle fleet is going to be increasingly electrified, perhaps exponentially over the coming years. This is a small step, simply just requiring a 240-volt wire to a few parking spaces in big projects. So, we think this is a smart and sensible step that will take us to sort of lead us on that bridge to our energy future because we know our future is going to look much different, you know, than it does today. And we're going to have, you know, maybe 40 or 50% of our vehicles as EVs over the next, you know, 20, 30, 40 years. And what we need to do now as a city is start thinking and planning for that future and we think this bill is a small step in that right direction.
So, with that said, in my last comment, having heard from the Office of Sustainability, where's the financial hardship for a developer to wrap his head around a small step that, and I will quote you, requires a 240-feet wire?
The estimate that we're being given today of $100 to $400 is nowhere remotely being accurate. We pay over $100 for an hour for a union electrician. We can't even get them to get a ladder out for $100. So, that's where the hardship comes down. I mean, if this were a different market where we don't have, if it's a wood frame construction and we can actually secure the wiring inside the wall, that's fine. But, the majority of these condominiums are concrete and block construction where the wiring has to be ran actually in conduit. And when it's 12 to 14 feet up in the air and they've got to run it across a parking garage, they've got to actually mount the metal conduit beforehand and they've got to get it from point A to point B and it could be hundreds of feet. The expense is much, much more than $400, unfortunately. We would be...
So, the follow-up question would be, and this is a rhetorical question, how much does that project cost? So, here's about, my bottom line is a simple, small step towards the future. The good news is that there is another opportunity to amend the bill further after it's passed, like most pieces of legislation. And I'm going to rest on knowing that we worked with all the stakeholders and if a survey was taken of BIA members and you told me that 75% were against it, then that would be very compelling for me. Having spoken with a couple of developers that do this already, I'm not persuaded that that's the case. So, we want to keep the lines of communication open and make sure as we sit down and engage in future sustainability matters that affect building that our conversation starts early in the process as we typically try to do. So, I thank you both for your testimony.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Stay here a second. Councilman Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I've been around long enough now that I know some of the styles of my colleagues and one thing I can say about Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown is that she's methodical in seeking compromise. Patient, trying to find the common space to make good legislation. I remember this conflict when it came to menu labeling and it became a national model. I remember this conflict when it came to lead paint protecting children and then it became something that the city touted around after the hours of negotiations and dialogue.
Couple of years.
I sense this is one of those pieces of legislation and I say that from having worked with folk in sustainability about the potential for natural gas cars and electric cars. And if we don't build infrastructure to kind of move us and push us dragging and screaming and kicking sometimes into the future, we will never take the baby steps to get there. So, sometimes as a city, we don't want to seem like Big Brother and being onerous to you, but when you start looking at your rate of returns some 10 years from now and people have developed a demand for it and you are better off for it, it'll be because of legislation like this that kind of made us move incrementally into the future and develop a infrastructure. It's like, build it, they shall come. You have to build the infrastructure in order for, to create the demand for such projects. And I just applaud you for your patience.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments for either of these two witnesses? Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
I should note for the record, there is a written testimony from Alex Duse, Delaware Valley Green Building Council, in support of this bill. That would be made part of the record. Anyone else here to testify on Bill Number 150814? Seeing none, our final bill of the day. Ms. Marconi, please.
Bill Number 150858, in ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning by Creating a New Ridge Park Roxborough NCO for the Area Generally Bounded by Ridge Avenue, Paoli Avenue, Umbria Street and Leverington Avenue."
All right. Mr. Gregorsky, please.
Morning, Councilman Greenlee, members of the Rules Committee. I'm Marty Gregorsky, Division Director with the Development Division of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission. I'm here to testify on Bill Number 150858, which was introduced in the City Council on November 12, 2015, by Councilmember Jones. Bill Number 150858 amends Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning by Creating a New Ridge Park Roxborough NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay for the Area Generally Bounded by Ridge Avenue, Paoli Avenue, Umbria Street and Leverington Avenue. This overlay seeks to preserve the existing character of the Ridge Park section of Roxborough in the face of high volume of new single-family residential construction. This could be achieved by legislating context-sensitive design and maintaining neighborhood walkability. The overlay reflects the recommendations of the Lower Northwest District Plan adopted by the City Planning Commission in December 2014. Philadelphia City Planning Commission will consider Bill Number 150858, its meeting of December 8, 2015, with a staff recommendation for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Gregorsky on this? Seeing none. Ms. Marconi, I think we have two people that had asked to testify.
Marlene Schleifer and William O'Brien.
Why don't you both, Mr. O'Brien, why don't you come forward also? Ms. Schleifer?
Schleifer.
Okay. Sorry.
Good morning, Councilman Greenlee and members of the Rules Committee. My name is Marlene Schleifer. I am a longtime member of Ridge Park Civic. I'm currently serving as its Vice President, its corresponding Secretary and its RCO Rep. We have quite a bit of testimony, but I will elect to read not my own, but one of my neighbors, Jenny Tiss, who lives on Mitchell Street.
And yours will be made part of the record. We have it already.
Correct. Thank you to Councilman Jones for introducing this bill on behalf of the Ridge Park Civic Association. I am here, or not here, as the case may be, to express support for its passage. I have lived in the area for 15 years now, moving first to Mannion post-college and then settling in Roxborough to start our family. I serve on the Board for Ridge Park Civic Association, which has opened my eyes to concerns of fast-paced overdevelopment in an area with many tree-lined streets and well-kept and inviting front yards. The Neighborhood Conservation Overlay would provide much-needed protection to these streets, not by stopping development of them, but by guiding development with a few common-sense principles. Over the past six months, I have analyzed, questioned and evaluated all of these principles carefully. I live in a relatively newly constructed house and questioned any rule I felt would have denied me my perfectly suburban house that allows me to walk to stores, playgrounds, libraries, schools and restaurants, allowing me to be in the city I love. But, after much reflection and countless walks around my neighborhood spent evaluating the landscape, I've realized the NCO simply bridges existing Roxborough with new construction in a way that makes sense. Houses that are 20 years and older have off-street parking, but you don't notice it because it's around the back or on the side. The NCO would return us to that. This idea that people are the first priority and cars are secondary, once common sense, now needs to be spelled out and we desperately need council support to do that. Developers, the only opposition we have encountered, have threatened that people will not continue moving here. I disagree. Speaking as someone who purchased a newly constructed house, I will admit I searched for homes with off-street parking, but will also point out it did not need to be in front of the house. Maybe the NCO... Maybe the NCO will prevent certain developers from building, but I believe that would be short-lived and that our beautiful neighborhood, close to so many things, will always be built on, but with housing that better matches its surroundings. I believe that with this NCO, developers and builders will find ways to build new homes that attract families to stay in our area, but will do so where cars are secondary to the families they are built for. One thing is for sure, without the NCO, the fast-paced overdevelopment is sure to continue in a way that will forever change the landscape of this neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, William O'Brien.
Speak into the microphone, please. Thanks.
Excuse me. Good morning, Chairman Greenly, members of the committee, Councilman Jones. William O'Brien. I don't object to the purpose of the bill. My concern is that some of the provisions present problems. Regarding the building height, I believe that that is poorly drafted and should apply to attached or semi-detached homes only.
To the what? I'm sorry, to the what?
To semi-detached or to attached homes only. Much of this neighborhood is rural in character. Large front yards, large side yards, large backyards. So if you have a, if you buy a house and it's an older house and you want to build something the code will allow, but the house next door, which may be 30 or 40 feet away, is two stories, this code would require you to put your third story back. Now, that makes sense in, in some of the areas where you've got row homes and you don't want to have two, two large 38-foot buildings with pilot houses towering over a two-story house. But when you have such separation as there is in this, much of this neighborhood, I think that provision could be better drafted. With regard to the requirement for a window facing the front with a habitable room, that's going to require additional plans to be presented to the zoning review unit. Right now, there's a limit to the number of plans that unit will accept. So if this bill passes, hopefully the L and I will be instructed to accept additional pages for zoning review. The requirement limiting impervious coverage, again, I believe can be better drafted. This city allows pervious asphalt. So you could have as much asphalt as you want in front of your house because it doesn't count as impervious coverage if it's pervious asphalt. So again, I think it could be better drafted. And then finally, if I could hand up, if I could hand up some packages.
Sean, please.
Regarding the final provision of the bill which prohibits front-loaded garages, the first 14 photographs show buildings, excuse me, showed single-family detached homes in the western side of the Ridge Park neighborhood. None of these houses could be built. Now, many of them have the elements that this bill endorses. They have porches, they have first-floor living rooms, they have windows that face the street. But none of these could be built because they also have a garage that faces the street. Now, when Matt Weisong appeared at a community, community meeting to explain the purpose of this restriction, he showed up a photograph that depicted the type of buildings that are in the final two photographs labeled O and P. These developments are across the street from each other on Delmar Street. Now, these, this is a case where you've got a 16-foot-wide building lot and the developer's trying to have his cake and eat it too. It's completely over-the-counter permitting, and now they've got a garage and an entrance and nothing that adds character to the street.
Nothing is what? I'm sorry.
Nothing that adds character to the street. I mean, we don't, walkability is not a defined term in our, in our zoning code. It's a concept described, but this is the type of development that I think was intended to be prohibited. Not the type of development depicted, for example, on Photograph A or B. I mean, these houses have, as I said, porches, first-floor living, and windows. So again, I think this could be better drafted, for example, restricting front-loaded garages on lots less than 21 feet wide.
Are we, I'm sorry, sir.
Really, Ed, I guess I just wanted to mark for the record that there's been no inventory taken to support this bill. My familiarity with the neighborhood goes back 30 years now. Most of the garages are front-loaded. Not just recently, but many of the, the houses have front-loaded garages. So this is a significant departure from the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Ms. O'Brien, just so I'm clear, for the record, are you speaking as a resident of the area, representing just yourself, or representing somebody, or what?
Well, as a resident of the 21st Ward, this, this provision was first introduced with the Central Roxborough Civic.
Okay.
Now it's migrating to Ridge Park. I live in the next neighborhood, so before the wildfire continues, I wanted to get on the record that I don't oppose what is trying to be accomplished. I think it could be done much better.
Okay. Let me just say, before I recognize Councilman Jones, I, I do know, as Councilman at-large, I hear from all over the city, the whole idea of front-loading garages seems to be something that a lot of communities are opposing. Now, I, I hear what you're saying, that there's already a lot of these in the area, but it does seem that that is something that a lot of people now, I know in, in, in the area near me, Francisville is a lot different from this area, I get it, but they, that is something that the community is adamant about, that they don't want front-loading. They just think it, it takes away from, I know the word "walkability" was used, and just neighborhood feeling, if you will, you know? So, you know, I, I understand where the proponents of this are coming from because we hear that a lot of places around the city, you know? So, and I'm not arguing with them, I'm just saying it's something, in all fairness, we do hear a lot, you know? But, Councilman Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the spirit of Blondell Reynolds Brown, you know, compromise is, is the best of all things in government, we'd like to take a look at the, and, and keep in mind, this is the evolution of, this bill doesn't just deal with front-loading parking.
Right.
It deals with the types of materials that are used.
Sure.
And what, and what we are attempting to do is not lose the small-town character of Roxborough.
Right.
And, and what happens when you're discovered, as you well know in other parts of the city-
I know all about that.
People start putting up things that, that totally take away from what people moved up there 20 years ago. So we'd like to pass the bill. We have struck the part about the front-load party, parking for the moment. We may revisit it in January, but we want enough time to talk about the differences and subtleties of the, the restriction, and so.
And Councilman, I have so much paper up here, I can't find the bill itself. When does this take effect? Is this immediate, or is this-
This would be immediate.
Immediate, okay. All right.
The 10th.
I'm sorry, did the Council say he's withdrawing the provision regarding front-loaded garages for now?
To allow for discussion.
Okay. And to that end, I wanted-
So just, excuse me a second. So just so I'm clear, is that what the amendment is?
Yes.
That's the amendment to take that part out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, okay.
And to that end, also wanted to point out Photograph H, 443 Parker Avenue. It's a corner property. And under the zoning code, this would have two street frontages. And though the front of the building that faces Mitchell Street, I believe, where the front door is, you know, that is, quote, "walkable" in the sense that it has first-floor living, it has an entrance, it has a window. And then the side on, on, on Parker Avenue has a garage. But that would also be prohibited because a corner property has two fronts. So again, these are issues that I think need to be addressed and can be done and, you know, should be addressed.
I got you. And as Councilman Jones said, it's something that's going to, discussion will continue, but that amendment will be offered, Councilman, at the, at the, at the meeting, which we're almost here, okay? Any other questions, comments? Thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to testify on this bill? Bill 150858. Yes? Come on up. While she, while the person is coming up, we also have written testimony from a number of people in the area. I believe in support, am I right? So, they will all be made part of the record. And she is one of them? Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. My name is Sandy Sorline. I live in the Ridge Park Civic area. And I just want to read a little part of the written testimony that I submitted. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
I like the little part.
Well, medium-sized. More density is coming, and I for one welcome it. It will bring new, younger residents and more diversity in Roxborough. It will bring more rooftops to support the kind of retail requested by our residents in surveys. However, the location and form of that density is critically important. It doesn't belong in the patches of woods on our steep slopes. Those woods are protecting our drinking water supply and so forth. Density with suburban form, garage fronts, paved yard, front yard parking, blank walls, which is what we've been getting in Ridge Park, is an environmental disaster because it relies only on cars. Density with urban form, on the other hand, frees us to also walk, bike, and ride transit. In northwest Philadelphia, urban form, so to speak, includes not just the shop-front corridors, but also our varied residential pattern of singles, twins, and row houses with their safe and friendly porches, stoops, and front gardens. In addition to being walkable, such a pattern gives newcomers more choices in dwelling types. For example, renovating beautiful Victorians for apartments makes more sense than raising them for blank-faced townhomes. We can be conservationists and urbanists at the same time. The NCO supports these matched goals. That said, I agree with Mr. O'Brien. This is not in my submitted testimony, so I'm adding it now that I've heard Mr. O'Brien's testimony. I agree with him on certain points and welcome the opportunity to work with him on this. For the, I also worked on the Central Roxborough NCO, and we had a local developer working with us to craft a language that would work for everyone. I think it made it a better ordinance, and we were not approached by developers to help us with that previously, so that, that's not necessarily a problem. However, in terms of the front-loaded parking, that's the most important, serious aspect of, of the ordinance, and in my mind, a compromise would involve where the placement, maybe certain streets known as, as "B-streets" could be a compromise, rather than taking out that provision entirely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And as Councilman Jones said, this will be a discussion that will keep going, okay? Anyone else here to testify on Bill Number 150858? Seeing none. That completes our hearing for today, but before we go into a public meeting, since this is our last hearing of the Rules Committee for this term, I just want to go on record thanking all members of the committee. I do think, without trying to toot our own horn here, I think we got through, and this today was an example of some, we did a lot of development for those critics who tried to say we're anti-development, but we also, I think, listened to communities, make changes when necessary, and certainly work with the district council people to try to get the best things done for this. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my Legislative Director, Noel Marconi, who pulls every hearing together, harasses people to get testimony, and somehow keeps me in line, which is a full-time job and totally not paid enough for that. And I also should recognize Michelle, our, who is the stenographer at most of our hearings, and somehow has gotten through this without getting carpal tunnel. I don't know how she did that, but. So with all that, that completes our hearing. Anybody have any comments? Not? We now go into our public meeting, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the amendments to Bill 15067, 150859, 150863, 150649, 150814, and 150858 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The amendments to the bills presented, presented by Councilman Good are approved. The Chair recognizes, again, Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the Bills 15067, 150859, 150863, 150649, 150814, 150858, all as amended, be reported out of this committee with favorable recommendations. The rules of council be suspended, so as first reading our next council session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The bills just read by Councilman Good, as amended, will be reported out of this committee favorably with a rule suspension. Councilman Good.
Move the Bills 150844, 150857, 150861, 150862, 150843, and 150864 be reported out of this committee with favorable recommendation. The rules of council be suspended, so as first reading our next council session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Again, the bills just read by Councilman Good have been reported out of this committee favorably with a rule suspension. That completes the meeting of, hold on one second, I'm screwing up again. Oh, wait a minute. No.
862 is being held. I'm sorry. Where'd 62 come from? How'd that get on there?
Hold on one second, we're not quite finished.
He's got a different list. He had 862 on there.
Oh, I'm sorry, because you know what? Because I, that's the one that I sent by accident and I'm going to cancel it afterwards.
Oh, okay. Yeah, bling show, it's his fault.
We want to get that over.
No, it's his fault. Okay, I guess you have to move to take 862.
Here.
Okay. So we just want to move 862 off.
All right. Chair recognizes, once again, Councilman Good.
Aye.
Just to think, we draw 862 as a, yeah, as a.
I think we have to reconsider the vote. I think that's what Mike said at the council session.
Okay. All right, okay, all right.
Recognize, Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we reconsider the vote on Bill 150862.
Second.
To move and seconded. All in favor, we reconsider the vote on Bill Number 150862?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Hearing none. And the record reflects, Councilman Heenan, a member of the committee, is present. We now, the reconsideration has been approved. Councilman Good?
We're done. Okay, we're done.
Okay. So, Bill Number 8150862, as previously mentioned, is being held to the, at the request of the sponsor to the call of the Chair.
We've done it?
Okay. That now, now completes the committee on, on rules and the meeting, committee on rules. And again, I appreciate everybody's cooperation throughout these four years. Thank you very much.[1716.26]